Where can I get the fans turned down?
What do you think about the people here tonight? I will probably be the order. Those purposes we need to discuss are helping to build a fire recovery. And the priority, uh, I was going to teach you how to really additional one to this one. This one's supposed to be the only one after we need any one of the process to put this out the end. Alright? So this time I'm going to go through the power outlet. I'm going to push myself in the hands, she's going to go through it. And, uh, we'll take a quick time to that.
Uh, we can be all for the village.
Oh, I'm sorry. My help, I'm saying, you must start from that one. Five seconds, people. What we believe in the suit of flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands unafraid, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can be the reason the riots here, I know there's events somewhere called the Fire Department, uh, town. Uh, we even have a matter of our own town, but actually four, four separate towns, like I've got a record. Uh, and their presence condition and for the last, like, uh, three nine months, and so what I've done on, uh, the Fire Department, what the Fire Department, uh, what the liability is, and also the trust fee, or some of the poor. Uh, so I think it's important that as kind of a public that we're aware that by my law, the village Fire Department did not depend on, uh, the village of the poor. And that we're bringing our village up side, like, so. Some villages, uh, we have our furniture, ours is not. Therefore, I have all the money, all the money, the trust fee, the village, which they will always have us. So currently here, we have, like I said, other counties, we've got a contract, uh, and currently, and then actually since 2018, the towns have been providing over there, this is a accountability. He took that act of years for the money that offered over there, for their protection. Uh, there have been, we don't know progress for this accountability, and I'm not dating us. Um, both have the village level, uh, this is our community, we need to tell them this to the town, so. If I can, we should document it. Specifically, this is in regards to what amount of evidence and another hundred percent amount. So we have the number of things for me, for people, the very, uh, common accountability. Uh, what we're doing is for cleaning, we try and we feel, but we're talking. Uh, if you want to know that that money comes from, uh, I think it was that nature. We don't want to have us copy, uh, copy the lawsuit, and then we'll take it to the manager and the listener. We make, we have only received our full information that I presented. Uh, and we also have received incomplete information, uh, for our manual, that we have a house, that we can build, and, uh, in your way to receive our authority. Uh, we have received the table bill and a paycheck number. The kind of payment check, and the bill that I'm paying from the Fire Department. So currently, we have now four, uh, I have access to motion, because our positions to build a water for air protection, for an interior, and we want to. They have sent about a couple of others, and we have not received one. So that I have been, uh, within the past four weeks, which is why we call this here. Because it is, uh, on us, uh, we would know that it's quite clear that they allow me to look into the village Fire Department, for protection and damage. And I've been, uh, we have been so, uh, so, so many needs to, uh, uh, to talk to her a little bit. We need to make that decision here. We would love to help out with that here, like I talked about, uh, some flag accountability, and that's why I need information. The common control of the work, so it's just on that side here, where the second floor, so that I can change that episode, so you can. And then I have the third floor, the land, and then the two quarters, two areas, where we're covering each other issues. Uh, I'm a brush over here, hold on, I'll see. Uh, and then I always say, this information is coming from one of the people, this information is coming from people in the community, of the Fire Department, of the town boards, uh, people, uh, as well as the neighborhood area for that market, which is coming. And I always say this is coming from one person who worked in the council, uh, he would say, he does a person in the house, uh, being the, uh, I don't know, uh, that we've been, we made a, uh, whether it's my fault, or my office, uh, what we're seeing, uh, have been there in three weeks. Obviously, I have a full morning, uh, people who say that accident, or injury that I have heard, while my calls, uh, when we did that in 2018, uh, it was issued with the NMP, and then it was carried out. He, he's needing one of the doctors, uh, to fill the heat number of the funding system, he's down the water system, uh, for, uh, for the, and we actually were, uh, this, uh, menu, which is about, uh, I have seen it, and, uh, from this town, and then getting into product, and then another town, we do not know. People, uh, who, uh, are on, uh, as far as the, uh, uh, working for the, uh. And we, we can turn this up, too, after writing, uh, uh, people's, people's name, thing on this slide, uh, our government has been moved, uh, fully, just on all, all the different departments. They do not want to fight. Uh, the law seems to have, ever, that I think it's direct, so we still have to be willing, and we just want. That all, um, they just, that, or, and third, in terms of the service, they are some of the, whatever they want to be. We have all the ability to deal with the government, and we are on it. And so they have not received, uh, they have told the boss, so from the Fire Department, when he, when he's in activity, so doing, uh, to now, to now, yeah, I think just like I have run, for now, and then I grew. And they can see there, looking, uh, the, the, uh, that that didn't mean this a lot, that that's just normal, I go over there, so we want to, and then stuff, uh, which I know, and then I'm going to, and then I'm going to, and then I'm going to. Uh, so, you can put together on a, they, they, they need the Fire Department, they are, they're saying, uh, for integrating, uh, their, uh, for, uh, the, uh. And last, uh, we did only with all of that, because I remember the time, uh, as well as the Fire Department, and the, uh, Chelsea, which is between the four, and I'm not really seeing that, uh, there, certainly, with the town, people, I was in the, uh, they, they, who's in our, uh, the attorney, making that, she's all, the Fire Department, so we become, uh, right here, just like, we remember that I'm real team, uh, they, and then you, uh, the, that, uh, they're, they're really good, and we, uh, that is, uh, um, it's not, uh, we. So, we're here basically, and we try to create a nation. Um, and I saw, uh, as a, uh, we're on a, we need, so I asked for mine, uh, I asked for, uh, I remember, uh, more than you, that, and for all these things, so, uh, and, and make sure that the tax revenue here are actually sent, the goal of the thing, uh, that they're requiring a lot, and that the town, at this point, uh, you're, uh, oh, no, no, we need that, that happens, and, 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 uh, um, we need, uh, um, we need, uh, uh, uh,
We got all in the know. You had our treasure to just not lose anything. You have suspended it. So we had to look for another treasure. Or we were pitching anything on our own. So we got another treasure. And at this point, a treasure didn't work out. You went down the road for a while and you haven't seen it. That is a grieving, or when I'm in the day change itself, because we couldn't give you books, they couldn't give you white books, anything like that. They go out, they get stuff out. We gotta have help from working with us now, who's going back to you. You get all the reports done, or you get all the bank statements, which I think has to go before you're ready. You have almost a statement that's drawn, January 2.
They're not such a good thing. You can't make that.
The legibility is quite.
Okay. Um, we see a conversation where you tell some people you're excellent. You have a video of another project in there. I had to have your project, I didn't refer it to be done, so to have all, which has its check and everything like that. Then the other thing was, uh, last September, I called them. We asked for a meeting. This is very important, we sat down in the middle of the woods, and we said, "Oh, there's this." And we asked that, can we do a work for free? To decide how will we pass? Nobody up there in the range, teaching the United Women's Word. It said, "How do you want this done?" And I told them, "Sorry."
You were providing the policies.
The policies showed me, not that we were to show. We're performed as our first stop, that's why we went to this place. So we had to say, yeah, because we need to have M D, and M D, nobody up there, they don't want to run by us. Uh, the best thing is what they did here, and they made all M D injuries, did you? If they knew we were going to have a war, people that are, I guess, and if it's mad, I would have been able to. It would be original, we couldn't fight, so we need. We had a lot going on with the pool. We have always thrown pools around where we were. The person that had the pool filled, says, "Hey, you don't need to come over to the water." There will be a foot, send it down the water. Everything is good, it's outside the water. Uh, one of the members looks right next to me, he says, "Oh my." He goes, "Thanks." Next slide, this slide means something. I have a shirt that is back there. I know people that do, 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 media people, so. Or they have your progress.
They don't have me.
Hey, can you go back to one slide?
Yeah.
I'm going to my visit.
Yep.
Alright, so my question.
Go back to that one slide.
Right, just from the corner right there.
I'm kidding, this is the M D. This is like, we're participating in some sort of, as a village official. So can you explain that? That's, 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 yes, sir. Who understand saying, "If you go to the first family, you get three things straight away."
I am not a village official. I agree with that.
That's what I think. So my next question is.
No, I didn't.
My next question is, okay, while we're doing this now, you know how we have a county. Your special together, already, in line, we're going to one month, so one month. So now that's all gone now, is y'all asking for it, now y'all rat track it, trying to really, y'all have. So, it should be done right now, like, like. My white light turns here, my white light, I don't know, my white light turns, but my white light is there. He coming in, she'll do it all now. I don't know nothing, but she knows. That's the good sound. That's what I'm trying to get at. One question, one question, what am I looking for? What would hurt? What am I looking for? Anybody? Start from today, I'm not a good business, I'm not seeing what I'm doing. That's why I'm upset. That's all, I'm a good business.
There's that right there. I didn't have that on my way to go to the official. I told them exactly, you know. I was a reference in a part of my apartment, the whole house is anyway, uh, kind of. And you, you get one of the boys, you could not have my money. And that's what I'm making.
But why, why, why can't you find time? That's the, why? I'll take it one more time. My title's in my safe box. Yes, ma'am.
Have you ever lost anything?
Not my title.
Well, I feel.
Not, not, not my title. Unbelievable.
Okay, you can do this, this is why I'm saying that I asked somebody to help women, that not M D. Our insurance is not that long. Uh, we're gonna get rid of the mission. For your insurance, my insurance, I've talked about my insurance, nobody. The living is all square. My insurance is so that we're not.
Everybody who is.
Everybody's insurance is so that they're all. That everybody's. That, and every school home, not a single one, so they're all.
Okay. Guys, everybody that's coming here, we're going to stop the village, need to stop. This isn't coming for a long, long time. They're the only ones trying to hold this together. Go back to, they want to go back to this, to here, look at this. You lost all this, everyone here. The village did not do this on the ball. They're trying to come on the revolution. Since we keep this together, that's it. But whether you're not, hate the village or not, the town is going to go. They want to part us. When every other part of the village is in the area, will not fall mutually, all of them. That's something telling someone right there, something's wrong. Maybe you can walk, you can see what's going on. We're looking at this as a bad, and we're looking to see what the village is doing. So maybe you can get this off, the village is bad now. This is very old, it's only this is gonna. Hate the village is all, they're trying to become a boss. The two offices are bad, A and B, that's it. Come up with another option, as you guys said. What else can we do with this partner? I'm still not a white light now. What else can we do with this partner? Other than A and B. If you're a white light, I might care.
Communication.
Was that?
Communication.
Can you even read this? The village is trying to hold this together.
They, they are.
How are they not trying to hold this together? It's too hard. They're out of home. How much money did someone work out of their?
Four, four thousand.
How much was it in the evidence?
Zero.
How much, how, how much, how much money did someone make out of it?
Three thousand.
How much was it in the evidence?
Zero.
How much did it, how much was it in the evidence?
Three thousand.
How much was it in the evidence?
Zero.
Like, all these things don't help. What, what options do we have? A and B is it, that's it. Part of our policy together, we want to stay together, just come up with an idea. What's your idea? Exactly. Even if it's already, even if it's ever been, it's already gone. They are us, there's nothing left to do. The village is trying to come on the outs, something to, to teach us together. Right now. There's no us, what? There's nothing what?
And when this system is, is this fire department, who is, who is this, no other town? We have hundreds of people in the village, they sell, no, they use our money. When the need was out of us, we need for anything. This is a, this is, no. Okay, fire department, go away. Who, this is what you're responsible for.
We are, we are, we are responsible by law.
I mean, I, 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 this is the last one, I'm not seeing this fire department go on. You got a very, very big business, we can't wait for the one minute. But, your goal is all M D, you're accountable, who's accountable to you? And you know what's dead, that's what I'm talking about. A hundred percent of it. You gotta walk here, like I said. I'm something new, but like I said. Let me still look at you, you know? Yeah, because you don't wanna hear it. Because you want people awesome, we can figure that in. And if we do this, I'll be willing.
I'm only going to say, I love the fire department, for like, for like, thirty-five years, I've been staying in New York. I have still been there, knowing the fire department association. Alright, one last question for this board and group here. You said that we had money to build new buildings, something like that. Why does that use, uh, repair or replace the truck that this private company placed? Um, the group. When I was chief of this fire department, I went to all these towns. Back when I was chief, and we set up at the time, that fire department, we got ten thousand dollars this year. Putting into our truck fund, so we could replace this truck. Now, I've been out for a fire ride. But I still involve what's going on in this, that looked into what's going on in this fire department. We are crying, you're right, we need to be part of our wills. I would come to, um, do the role in their, pretty beginning of. We don't have to ask the village to do that, do we? You said that we have the new controls, we have coal passes, we can use, we can use the village, or the dog, or the fire department. To put on a food room or a rain. You guys saw, we need firearms. We can save the, the, the fire department, or this village, we had set up for disasters, we had ice. Storms, we had all climate things, we put this village, that the people sitting here, and here, helped us get through. Not you want to take this department away from us? No, no, this is wrong.
Okay, in, 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 in order for the fire department to do, they have to notify by the board, the system board. If they notice the fire department is being covered by the law, they have to notify the commission, which is the board, for that, that's why. That had to, the fire department had to do that, so, uh.
Do you have a report, I see a fire department?
Sure.
You mean, that was a person, you want that?
I'm the president of the board, area of some, we need to handle that. Again, we do, we do benefits, so that in that, that's in favor of the people, they do a play. And I'm activating those as a corporate to die, and we do fireworks, that, we do. That is a, you know, I have to call, I have to hold somebody, that, 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 that's a free. We don't charge anything. If they want to give a donation, they're welcome. And I'm sure if one of them gets something, uh, they can receive.
Okay, we gotta stay focused. We're not talking about the bills, we're not talking about disasters, we're not talking about. We're not talking about disasters, we're talking about trying to keep our fire department. The other thing is that the village management can't handle it, they don't want to play. That's the bottom line, we're trying our best, they don't want to play. Every hole is there, you call for it. They don't want to play, this is not our, I'm not getting heat with this. This is not on me, this is not on my board. The door doesn't let you take anything, it's about accountability, city, city, it's about accountability. All this is about the book, we ain't talking about, I don't care, I'm not talking about that, hold on, I don't care, do it. We're talking about accountability, what the money is going in, what the justice, that's what you're taking for. You take for, I pay for, I pay for, what else is it more? I'm trying to make this stuff right, this is the right. Accountability is what I'm looking for, that's it. Accountability, that's it. Social movement going on, social stuff, very, very simple. All we care about, first of all, some, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and E, we, 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 there's, uh, excuses. They're following, and if they get excuses, another free excuses. Accountability, how do I, 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 okay, if you had, if it was proper good, because you, proper good, you should, you should change. As we should change, it's no doubt, doubt, doubt. Y'all know this. So, this is what you said, y'all don't see this as a problem, alright? We gotta understand, you gotta take that back, that's what I'm running through. I want to take, I want to go up. You guys, you know, it's about accountability, and you guys have to have accountability, because, eh, I'm not here. I'm not here, you guys know that, and don't sit here and think that, and have that kind of going on, y'all know that. And all the paper, you're going to bring you for, we ain't talking about that money. We're talking about very money, and how people score.
I'm not really getting a CPD or any insurance to keep them on our property. We all got down to the streets and everything that I need and the solar power, the power, if you're around, so many times someone we know, or we may get on the razor, or not on the media race, where it will allow me to, we become that, that same thing. I just don't understand why that goes out my responsibility. And then you can cover yourselves, you can cover your village, and it won't be against us. The community is extremely option free. Option free is that here is the one other power house or station within the village limits. People from remaining five departments who live are either in the village or close to village limits will be hanging at a station. Where's not time will probably be better. So they're not working here and they're going to be 20 after a minute. This will be located within village limits. So people who live in the other area. So our authority, our authority is not going to go up. And that's what your homeowner insurance is going to look at for where you live. So when you call or for some reason your homeowner insurance says you don't longer have to communicate every apartment, what's going on? You also have a house out of the village. So your homeowner insurance could not go up at all. Because there's no change from where the people are actually competing with this match out of. So I just want to make sure that's clear. That's a little clear.
Sometimes I got meetings, TJ lives down the street from me, and there's a lot of fire fighters that live around me. Okay? Uh, very often when I go see red traffic and stuff, you know? They're, they're like, they're all living. But now you're going to put a city, I have, uh, you talk about the village, okay? We did the village, but you still have people that they had to come 20 minutes away to do anyway. If you're not doing it.
They are village people.
So you're going to have the village fire department, put away, put away for the two people, but none of our firefighters are going to be there. You see, you understand what I'm saying?
I can see what you're saying, but I don't.
So TJ gets in, two of the things down the road on the fire department, he's the one of the partners, or something, you can mean it anyway.
He's in the village and they're members of government, they're members of castles, they're members of the sports, they already live here, but they do not belong to the village that's located in fire department.
Why live in the village?
Hold on, can you stand? Hold on. They're not going to, they're going to be back like that, like they had at Ross. You've got 20, 25, 30 minutes. Then you two fire department, fire department that will come back. This is older, this is older, they take this fire department, all people that do not come back. They go to new stations, they go to new equipment, new setup. I don't like 20 people that come back that are old. Even other departments, maybe it's again. There are people that are in this district now, that are already, that are already, are dreaming, that are really going to come back. So that's your youngest generation that come back. Old people, miles, who might want to the village, that's going to come back.
I don't see that the community are going to work on local. But it's not a good thing. Where we're still, we're, but why do the community need a village? But why do the living pass? But why do the bigger fire was creating?
Right, but they didn't have another firehouse, it ends their life.
They had two kind of firehouse that is saving, they live in their village. And then the fire was created, so you can't tell me that bringing another fire department that is also set the stage, but that are. I don't want to see your option free, I want to see the numbers. I want to see the numbers.
Okay, that question for you. How the champion get to the spot we at right now? How the, how the champion resolve? You know how to resolve?
Lack of training. Lack of training.
What else?
That was it.
That was it.
And a lack of accountability also. It's the same thing, going in the same direction.
So, uh, everybody's getting on top of, um, I have a fire department in the village I'm doing, and a lot of our business by, I'm, 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 I'm. What I've seen with the village board so far is their transportation. It's not, um, their transportation is just about finding the safety of the community. They don't want to change that. If, if your sole issue is the safety of the community, or can't have a little option aid is not paid, because people who are in fire department want to charge everything. And it doesn't need to be that. Like if safety does not number one concern for the community, which it not personally, then all of this doesn't need to happen. If, if the towns hold the money, and they say they don't come back unless there is village oversight over the fire department, then there is no choice. If what we're super concerned about is the safety of our community, there is no choice other than the left of the village to control, whether we like it or not, that's all. I'm here to apologize. I'm here because I have houses in fire department, Eric has a house in fire department, and I have a business, and lots of other things. And I'm on a fire department, two times fast pop, so somebody's got a fire department over the next. And if that, only way that that happened, and if that the other town come after support, because they're like, we're going to the local fire department, the safety will first go up. That's not, that's, that's oversight, and the safety just doesn't matter. I might hear your safety. Not yet, not, I might like it, I might not like it, so we're not going to share. The town has made it pretty clear that that they will not come, which is why fire department is the way we serve them. You need to pay them somewhere, but they're, they're, all their uses be just protocol for by many people oversight that everyone other business has to do without your representation. Our main concern is safety, it is all right.
I don't get it. I don't understand what you're saying. And what I don't understand is the town run, and why do you get the fire department in town? I don't hear anything. This is mine, your mine, your mine, that is fire department yourself. Why do you think that? No, let's not try my thinking. Jim, that's right. Why? Nobody asked this fire department, where is the fire department? Is this you everybody? No, where? But Jim, that was for fire media. Why? Please, why? This is fire community accountable for out of money. And I, I don't believe it's fire department as well. And I thought I knew what you were talking, and then I regret all you guys doing it. But I don't think it's hard to ask.
I'm listening to questions of money.
Tell me, why you're not being accountable when you do the fire department?
Accountable, we're trying to get them to pay for it. We tried to, it isn't worth it.
That's my question. What are you covering up?
We're not covering anything. We've been audited twice, and we definitely hate the auditors.
You're still working on it.
We have bound some treasures, that's wonderful.
That is your privilege.
Here's something else that nobody here knows. December of last year, this village board signed all the contracts, never told the fire department what our money was going to be, they took all money, which is illegal by law, isn't it? Yes, it is. The fire department has to have a meeting and state, talks and states that they agree with doing those contracts. That's state law. We have to agree, and we're going to take the protection area from coming. But the village signed. Funny thing, the second contract, the last six, this six months right now, the town Denmark made sure that I signed it the impression.
And you signed it under correct?
I did, because I was, because it was done the first place.
If, if you're signing it under correct, that means that basically someone has held the gun to your head and you made the sign. Okay, so please, can you put the question as why you haven't given them information on your laws, and if there are no people? That's what we want to know, where your money come? Nobody.
The information is given. It's like I said, we've got through treasures for the last couple years. We've got through treasures for the last couple years, and every time you get a new treasure, you've got to teach them all the things of how, see how they go in quick books and do this and that. Think for a while, Ronnie, I don't care.
You still lying.
That's a question.
So, if this is what you plan to do with all these, if they all do your fire department this is perfect, not on the trade, but on all your homes, but they're not going to fire your property. And then this is for everybody to pay this. You're just going to tell them, you're going to come to the fire department. Your fire department is just a company making, and if you want to go to fire department, you'll come with it.
If you just learn something to be a cop.
When I heard that everybody needs a fire department, but I think village doing a fire department, and after meetings, that is just happening. So if you want, if you want to go, hey, yeah, maybe fire department, oh, the village shut up, and the village door, oh, the village people, we got, um, to take it, um, and when they after meetings, you need, you need order their request, and then you go. Don't go along, we can all work with me, only one layer of saying. I totally agree with this, and I'm going to say that it's probably behind this that I need the car. So I just want to see that in the town, I don't have a fire department. I, I would love to see, I don't want to see it. But to make it fair, so that's what we got. So we have it, but let me see, he said I'm, oh, you guys, they should have, you're right? But let me ask some reasons, we should, he's not, or we shouldn't, no, he said, I like a hat to you, right, Mark? I like a hat to you. All village meetings are open to go at any time, anytime they go, and ask questions, or send a letter, and they know that for a little while, that they want, and they call the town, but anytime they need to go, if more than, or one more, or more than, they get together, and there has to be a whole meeting at a noon. So if they want to meet with a whole board, that's not possible, unless it's done, and they notice, and have a meeting. So to choose a woman, try to get a whole board together, that's not something that happens, that happens, that happens, it's something that happens to be published, it's a community, so that everyone in the town like they're meeting. If they want to leave with only these people, very well to do that, again, at the meeting, because of the trust. So again, everyone who don't want to go to the meeting and ask questions, I, I don't want to do the perception that they have no idea what we want, because they certainly have a very nice village document that I will provide, come to town, that I've given multiple times, by email, it is writing, and then I come to the town to the fire department as well. So it is not that there are no communication, that there is not any calling back.
I just don't, this is.
I know, I'm just saying, I want to justify that.
They should have given something, but I'm just saying that your village mayor should also be responding to the public, that's his job. Instead, I've been told many times by your village mayor, that he didn't ask you.
You've never, you've never been to a meeting?
Nope.
Ask us, ask us right now. Ask for it. But why don't you come to a meeting? We've never seen you at a meeting.
Because you muted us every time we tried to talk.
All right, Cheryl, I'll get to you, Shane.
I got coffee, ladies. We just, we just said, but we could go to the village meeting. We've only started with the meeting for.
So true.
All the years. I know, I know, all the, such a rare, the first, uh, year or year. After that, this offer, offer that they're, to the village, I know, they didn't, they didn't, uh, uh, I'm moving on. Okay, because, uh, public forum, we didn't start for two and a half, did not start that up until April of this year. And you have nobody, nobody go to the meeting, and you have a public forum. And, uh, so are you working, you go to the meeting? Can you say that? Now, you said up there earlier, that you pull ups are, are going to not pull up, they are, you were saying, you said it's a problem to pull up. Now, you talking about, what, what is going to do? How is it going to go up? Maybe not go up?
It should not go up.
It should not.
Should.
You said it.
Should.
First, you said it. So.
I don't run the insurance company.
I know you don't, I know you don't.
So I don't know if they're going to say, we moved the fire station 500 feet down the road, someone else's might go down, because now it's closer, now you're 500 more feet away, yours might go up. So I can't tell you what's. But the ISO rating for the village will not go up. So your insurance should not go up if our ISO rating does not change.
Where are you going to lead it? And, uh, where, who's supporting the meeting? We don't have a fire department, and, uh, our place is our own plan. We had accidents, like the one where you said, uh, the dogs off the, the ice, and nothing like that. I don't think I ever went up here, who are our fire department? I can remember where the village, where's the fire department?
You don't know for sure, because you can't tell.
Uh, Shane, I guess that's just this is TJ. Does, do you have any guys that have fire professional training? Should you? If you're calling us fire professionals?
We're not calling ourselves fire professionals. We are the village board, we're already having jurisdiction.
We're doing, yeah.
Yes, but this, we don't have to, we already have to.
We have. We have.
So we have village law 10, 1000, 1020, that governs the way that we do our business with the fire department.
Which would be the same as fire professionals?
Correct.
One of the whole, we, we, there's some help people with professional training?
We still have to do training.
Oh, yes.
I, I, I was.
When I recruited to the village, 2004, the fire department and few days has had all sorts of problems, and they don't, and there was no problem accountability or what the board was doing, this is a never issue with everything else. Now, at that time, this is the list, and fire department working together, our rules and everything else, and everything that must be doing, so where is this disconnect between that and now? Of what very soon, and you move Dr. Paco, so who's accountable for that part of the disconnect?
Two controller reports in five years.
Okay. Why would you, why would you get in, you know, the frequencies now of somebody calling with whatever? Because what happened, the bad was happening now, where, there was a disconnect somewhere. Somebody lost accountability, you want to talk about accountability, somebody lost it. So if they were talking to that, and the villagers were talking to that at that same time, between the both, who lost accountability on that, if it gets lost?
So previous, previous village boards fell on their face and didn't do their job.
So why are we?
Why? So, so I can't, I can't ask him for the.
Why, then why do you know the past, all members being held accountable, they can't, why? They messed it up, I think they went by the program.
You can't, they're.
I'm retired military, that's gentleman's retired military. I don't care if you left your unit three months and something wasn't in your name, you would still held accountable if there was a disconnect with it, even after the fact. So why would these guys?
But sir, you were on the village board for those years as well.
And so was.
Yes.
Lots of disconnect.
Yeah.
Lady behind me, I have a question about your current fire department. I think, uh, there's probably almost two jobs for fire department on the short term.
Fire or expired?
Oh, oh, active. And, uh, is that expired or, uh, I am, uh, what's that? Uh, motion.
My name is Jenny Har, I'm the secretary of the facility, and one of the things I wanted to know, um, is that when I am A, you said that if the fire department were cooperate, that the towns would come, or would come back. That's understanding, it's not necessarily zero. It's not necessarily zero, if they cooperate, you set up the towns to consider come back.
Not for this coming year.
Not for 2023. All towns.
They, they have, they, they are already starting their budget process next month.
Okay.
So.
So they have signed anything.
Right, but that will come October, November, when they set their public hearings.
So there's time to let them come back?
Well, they haven't been invited.
We haven't been invited to the table.
So how do we about straighten it out so that we can be aggressive and consider, should they go with option A?
They go with option A, we stand the possibility of moving forward, but then.
So who is in control of that, and how to make sure that it happens?
That's good for the fire department.
Okay, so fire department decided to go with option A, and the water department could go to war. Okay, say that as a number. Okay, what's the next step? Who is in charge of the one hundred towns to negotiate a contract?
We are much.
Not just the fire department, still the county, they have signed it, correct?
They have not been asked to the negotiating table. That's already, that's already done.
But, okay, so we can't approach them and ask them to consider?
No, they, they have already, the budget has been signed.
If the contract is not signed, there's still things that could be done, and someone wants to take it to which you do it.
The other thing, um, that I want to, um, make an announcement of is that I heard, and this is first by fire departments, you know, I was heard or rumored that the fire department was totally, you use the fire department to cause a primary blowout. So we can't use the fire department, so we wouldn't have the fire departments, it's understanding.
So we have a little more to talk about here, you don't know. They think this is a bad one, but they have had time by auction, if we set that whole fire department through, and our lawyers can handle that, they don't follow.
It's sort of the, the time that I have with the other, give me a, we need to go most, but what this guy goes, he says it takes 15 to 18 months to change all this forever, that's exactly what's in our intention.
Do you have his minutes, I gave you two, can you give them to him?
What is off the last page?
That's our, that's going to save it, save it, right from the beginning, I don't care about me here, he said it in the beginning, it would take 15 to 18 months to get it, the corporate fire department out of this contract.
No.
That is what he said.
No, it is not. 15 to 18 months to redistrict the town, to redistrict fire protection area number 223, which is what you cover. It will take 18 months to do that. They have already drawn temporary lines, your contract expires in January, it expires January 1. That is exactly what he said.
It happened, but it was the new contract.
Yep.
All right. One more? We don't understand that.
I would want to say to you that, um, I would like to see, I would like to see communication between fire department and the village board, that's the way you work things out. Um, I would like the people, um, in our village, I would like to see sort of how, um, I will say that secretary, I do know that the lawyers that have been involved with fire department were going through their, um, their problems, okay? So they can come again, so I know fire, fire department is trying to improve in areas. And things that have happened over the years are still permanent, you have to have work on that. And so I believe that the fire department and the village board, if they work together in whole, that there's a bargaining class. And the legislature is similar, there's, the legislature call, and different opinions, and, and things like that. So, um, so I would just, um, ask that when people come along and work themselves together. The other thing, um, is that they can have time to, to review, and make some more interesting work to ask for, we also need to be comfortable, so that's also something about two of us, with ours, meaning, and more than teaching at times too. So, and then you have the change of office, officers, things like that. So you have an offensive organization, some officers may not be as important, should they be?
Yes.
But the non-offensive has to be previous officer. And then the next one, I'm assuming, secretary, and things like that. And then the next one has to be fixed mess from previous ones, you know, and, you know, we don't want that, considering, seeing in our own facility, so, um, so I'm just saying that I would like to see, you know, police travel, and person, and, uh, to keep the, the fire department here, and from our, I'm just saying, I know that some of these can do their organization without our, um, trying to do it.
We also need to, just, um, saying the village board, we want to change it, we want to, we want to have to go through, there's a lot of stuff, highlights that we've been doing, and trying to make it, but what we're doing before we make it, highlights, everything that's going on, the double highlights, the others that we had had to pair and work on, we'd be the W2, didn't just do this. So this is just one of the items that we're working on, and this is where we have to start being accountable for tax, and, so, anyhow.
I would like to see a statement, option A. The other thing, I would like, if the fire department is doing this, like, giving, uh, account and everything, giving due pay to me, to the lawyers and stuff, it's like this goal, for work together, to get this done, I cannot honestly just go to another department. Yeah, I spent a few years, but there's somebody else who's not a fire today, and you first one there, whether you want it or not.
Okay, now see, just, just me being me, when I get the word lawyers, that means come to fight, this is me, I could be wrong. When you say, when you say lawyers, that tells me, okay, you don't trust me, you're ready to fight. We don't have to do lawyers, this is, we can do, we do like adults, hey, this is what's going on.
Why is the lawyer here?
So, so she's talking about the town laws, and what we are, what we are, what we are, uh, held by legally, that's why she's here for.
But you don't want us to use our word.
Because I already know.
All they use is lawyers, it's not to the point.
Look, I got, nah, I keep that to myself, but I understand.
No, say it, boarding hall is stupid.
I keep it, I keep it to myself.
So say it.
This thing you're talking about, oh yeah, you forgot you left out, that he said, he said redirecting the fire department would take eighteen months to complete. The town is not interested in redistricting the fire district. It is the goal of the town to return contract into the village of Copenhagen. After it works out, it's fire issues. What the fire department will look like is not clear to the town right now, but it's between the village and the fire department to talk that out.
To work together.
That's what you left out.
To work that out.
When you do have truth, you do have truth, it's still a lie. You left that out. That's very, that was a very disimportant information because it makes me look bad. It's right here. It's right here.
We're trying to make you make...
Accountability is all I'm looking for. That's it.
What we're saying is we all need to work together. We're not saying...
No, timeout. No. Like I tell the...
But yes.
I'm done with this. I'm done. It ain't no...
But maybe you should be on the board.
Timeout.
Board for your village.
It ain't no...
Board for your village.
Walk out of here. It's the ball is in your court. I have done everything that we can do. I'm like fed up. We done everything.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I've done everything we wanted to do.
If we can't have a meeting on the last one, what if we have work sessions instead of a meeting? What if we call it a work session instead of a meeting? Can we meet our board and your board without having to go through and do your week of...
Is it in the...
With that type of attitude, how are you supposed to work with other people?
This is, I'll put you, you can understand. Okay, what I'm saying, ladies, and you have all this, they did so much, and just kept doing you wrong, doing you wrong, doing you wrong. And all of a sudden, you get to a point, say, look, I'm tired of this guy doing me wrong. Because no matter what I do, he's still gonna do me wrong. That's where I'm at right now. Because no matter what I do, no matter what we do, they're still gonna treat me wrong. So now I have to stand up because they're gonna treat me wrong. It's a change.
And not working together.
A lot of shit.
People have to be, you can have your own attitude about being mad. But when you bring it in the same way with Jim, he's not an angel. He can have attitude, but you still have to work together.
Have you ever been in a position where you have people under you? And everything that went wrong with you, have you ever been in a position?
But nobody is under anybody. We're all equal.
Look here, I'm talking from experience. I'm not making this up. Have you ever been in a position? This is what leaders do.
It's a positive of the auxiliary.
Because if something goes wrong, that's what holds the bill.
That is right there. Your president is talking, this is talking for here. And you're telling her she's not responsible? That is wrong. You're not responsible because you're not doing your job.
Okay, whoa.
You don't say! There's only one person that's got up and slammed their chair on the floor here tonight.
My... Look, man, she tried for... She tried.
I'm saying that if the two groups cannot meet and act like adults and talk to each other with respect, both sides, how do you expect to fix this?
Essentially, if they ask for me, you can't get us.
We tried.
How have you tried?
Well, show us where you tried. Show us the blackboard where you replied to our request for meetings. Show us.
We requested meetings, like, not just the fire department.
If you're not willing to work together, we can't have this one mad because of this, or this one mad because of this. We are adults. We're not kindergartners. You have to be adults. Make adult choices. Make the village better. You know the saying, it takes a village to raise a child? This is a village. We need to raise all of us to be respectful and do what needs to be done and work together. It's not that hard.
Now let's move to the place.
Now, you may, or they, your people, their people, what can you go to the board or go into that?
We've had issues with the board. I'm not gonna be going to their meeting in the fact, like I have. So that's where I'm at with that. Even as a member there. So that's where that is, and that's all that is.
People on yours?
I have a suggestion.
Yes.
Why don't you hire a mediator?
Can't you be?
Maybe counseling.
That can get you through the rough spots on both sides initially. Get you down to set involved, a plan of action, and once that kind of gets...
Fire department.
And gets moving, then you, the mediator has done the job and we have a working... I really think you're at a point that you need a neutral person to come in and work the issues. Go into car race.
Unfortunately, we don't have that kind of time.
All right.
Time you have, all the time you want.
We don't have the money for the time you're talking about.
We have money.
All right.
I'm just going to go with the money. And this is the last thing that I need to talk about. It's just to say, again, the bar, I have an end meeting where the manager's fire department had a meeting. And then the board was in the old town. And it was just explaining just what was needed. And it was just running through and what I did is I went to the chair. But this is the last thing that I need to do.
My name is John. I'm a boarder for the league for the village. I found their audio recorder for the fire department. I know the patch with the village board is someone that I received on the Brooklyn Express. It is only the long for our members moving, we find it a little old. And the board requires us to, that's not a dog, but again, a kind of wood. But we need to stop working backwards, that was one wrong.
Take the whole.
Okay, okay. Close your mouth until I'm done.
It's definitely going backwards. Look forward or actions, the main thing to... Element of loyalty, village, fire department, it doesn't wrong, a fire department's bad. It's a normal person's fault. And I know it's a change to the people, the little success, the little merit, the little fire department, we need it. We need it for... So I want to make it a new one and move forward. We don't want to the fire department.
That sums it up. Mayor?
Just say something. I'm sorry. You know, the county manager asked me if I'd send up some deputies or whatever to come to this meeting tonight. Absolutely not. There's a constitution in place. You and you have the right to exchange civil discourse. Have a discussion, civil. So I came by myself, so I wanted to see what was going on. Not just the sheriff as a citizen of the county. The only thing across this state that disgusts me is the amount of anger, the amount of hate that we hold towards each other, that we can't get along. Now, some of you sitting might think, wow, the sheriff's being a hypocrite right now because he can't get along with the county legislators. Well, guess what? I can, or I wouldn't be here. We have discourse. We have good discussions. I don't hate any of them. But on times like you, people on the board here, you envy at each other? There sure is. But that's why our founding fathers put a constitution in place. And before that, a lot of good men went and died for that constitution. Amen to that. I don't forget that whenever I get up to speak. The biggest thing we've all forgotten in this room tonight, I'm sorry if I've said you this, I'm not being condescending, is you forgot them, these three young men, then the rest of the younger children down below them in this community. It's not about your house. You can replace material things. You can't bring back a human life. So start thinking that way first. Go back to your hearts. Go back to the families that you have. Let's start thinking a little clearer. And if it means we have to swallow our pride a little bit, then we may have to swallow a little bit of our people given authority, then we do that. Because it's for them, them right there. It's not for you. It's not for your material things that you own. It's these lives right here. Yes, you should keep your fire department. And once again, it's you, the people in the village that define your government. You elected, I'm not, I say you, the people, elected this village board. If you don't like it, you change it. If you don't like the members of your fire department, you change that as well. When they talk about accountability, there's the accountability. Exercise the God given right you were given to make those choices. But be adults enough to do it that way. You have to set that example to them. Because that's the problem across our country today. We're setting a piss poor example for them. That's why you have your riots. That's why you have your brainwashing going on in our educational institutes today. Instead of being together, you're dividing all of us. There's too many of you here that have over a hundred years of family in this community. Don't do it that dishonor by what's going on here tonight in the past few months. You are all better than that, all of you. You have to set that example to them, and what are they gonna believe in? What are they gonna believe in? All I want to say is, keep your fire department, people. Keep your village board that you elected. You have to work together, whether you like each other or not. Personalities don't matter at that point. Business does. And the business at hand is getting protection back for the children in this village so they can have a house to stay in that doesn't burn down. That they can believe in people who volunteer. Not get paid, the same as be volunteered for the military. The same as our volunteer firemen do the job they do today. They're your citizens, they're neighbors, they're relatives. We shouldn't be doing this to each other. Now, I know there's a lawyer here. Especially being a cop, do we like lawyers? But you know what? We have to work with them. That's part of our system too. So at times, if we can't do what we need to do, we turn to that lawyer, that lawyer, that legal representative of the people. If that's what you have to do, do it. If you don't have to, then start being a bunch of adults. Please, I'm not being condescending against you. Let's set the example to them, so that one day they can govern themselves. Because if we don't set that example here tonight, what he's done, what I've done, where is it? What other military members in here in this room have done is all or not. There's too many flyers on the telephone poles out there of those men, women that did that. Let's not forget it, guys. We're all better than this. Let's work it out. That's all I have to say.
Mark, can I say one thing? I just want to say, I don't want to see the fire department go. I was, a couple of years ago, as everybody knows, my aunt had a fire at her house. My son was there. And because my son is alive, because of the way my aunt responded and the fire department, I'm getting my son out, and I'm very glad my son is still alive. And I care less about materialistic, fine, whatever. But I still had my son here because of the fire department and the way they responded quickly to my aunt's house. And they got her out and everybody else safe. Yes, my husband is part of the fire department. I see what they do behind closed doors, the training, the everything. And yes, I don't want to see that go because he loves being a fire department, fire member. He is always there for everybody. He's the first one out the door. We're family vacations, but he's gone. And I would like you guys to kind of work together and work this out because my family are very precious to me, and my whole village is my family. And if you guys can't work it out, then this is not a village. And I came to this village because I heard nothing but great stuff about it. It was wonderful, but it's very disappointing that you guys cannot work stuff out. And I'm not taking sides. I'm not into politics. I could care less about politics. But I think you guys need to realize that it's not materialistics that we're working on. We're working on human beings. And our kids are priority, like he said, and raising our children in this community. And I wanted my kids to be raised in this community, and I can tell you right now, I don't really care if they do or not because of the fighting and the bickering and the lying to each other and all of this. And I really think you guys just need to stop banging heads. I don't care what the village has to do, what the fire department has to do, but I do not want to see this village dissolve as a whole. And I just think that you guys just need to really just work together and get this taken care of and stop listening to all the people have to say and all the rumors and everything.
My girl, I just want to say, if you just didn't exercise, if everybody in this room that has anything positive that the fire department's ever made for you or the auxiliary, raise your hand. But a few hands raised, isn't it? Remember that when you're finishing with all this stuff. We don't just fight fires. We're there when people need us. The doors of the fire hall gets open for fires. It gets open for road closures. It gets open for ice storms. The auxiliary does food helps with the food pantry every month. We do the angel tree that gets done in Copenhagen, the auxiliary backs. We do brief dinners all the time. Not that we like to have to do them, but it's part of life.
Benefits as well, the families.
We benefit the whole community. We're not just there for fires. We're there for everything. We're there when the neighbor calls that their cat's missing. We've gone on cat hunts, dog hunts, kid hunts, weren't once. We, yeah, we're there when the military housing had propane leak. Where'd all those families go? To the fire hall. Who was there to feed them and direct them and help them find places to stay? So it's not just for fires. We're there every day. Seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. And we're all allowing tears.
I took that last time, uh, what the manager said, I had a six-year term. Fifteen years ago, our company, we were, I had a four-year term. And you can talk for a rich lawyer, I'm going to just say many years. And, uh, that they've been through right now. The woman's passing, I heard, so and she was in the firm, she was in the firm. And the father was present, but they were there. And not for them, they would have gotten out, gotten to, uh, drop them to the terminal. What can you, sir? You work for your day, it's not for, uh, for me.
All right. Go ahead. You want the mic or you just...
I want to say this specifically, we had a fire show here. If you're watching the show, if you don't want to let the fire unfold and the fire's been in my son, we are here. But those ten degrees, both fire in the pit, within two or three minutes. You know explosions we've had? Our, I'm saying, I got myself a day too. And I think they go because of the fire. And I think they go because they have fire, like the closest roads, my husband comes out there. The one we talked about, they're all over her. They did the whole thing, they go, so they don't get anything killed. They think about.
So we've all had that same thing, it's not supposed to be a fire. Everybody's stuck like this. The devotion, the time, and anything we do. I've spent many times, it's hard, I've been, every garden park, I lose time. Helping with every single one of those towns. Doing whatever we can do as a community to help. Everybody's done that. Nobody's second guessing any part of it. We've all been touched by that. It's the fifteen thousand dollars that's missing. It's the vehicles that are bought, it's the vehicles. We've had money, and I was running it twenty years ago doing the bench, money was missing.
There's never accountability to that side. That's giving everything. So it's that stuff, the accountability of that side, that's giving everything else something bad to block out. One bad thing, you forget about the hundred good things, huh? So it's, it's that accountability to that side. The business side is what's ruining everything apart. No second guessing the time, and the devotion, and the training, and all of that that everybody has put in to the fire department and helping with this. It, it's not that, it's not that part. If the village ends up starting a new department, they start that. We encourage everybody to come and be part of it. It, it's, it's the management end of it, that's what needs to change, is the management. It's not the fire department's side. It's that stuff. It has to do with the game management. That's what it is. And that's what it is. It's the management, upper management end of it. Will also put in thousands of dollars this three times, volunteer all the time. It's not that part. It's the business side. And it's a shame that it has to go to the money, and it always comes down to money. The greed and power is going to ruin everything of all. But it should take that out of it. I was using the fire department's serpents, you remember? 550 calls, it was commission dishes down there. We ran a pile of calls, three, four, five days. And we never had it, we get swallowed within the commissions. But neither with this, and neither, neither, no money stolen, anything coming from all the truck funds there. Everything is there to a T. So don't, don't take the, don't confuse the two. The volunteer time, the devotion, we save this person. We've been, we've all seen some benefits. It's not that that the village is going after. That it's completely separate. It's a business. And like looking at this, and like we keep talking to work together, there's room to work together, yes. But this meeting shouldn't help the movement. This screaming back and forth and everybody's talking back and forth, it gets slow motion. Everybody's slow motion about it. Because we do have so much connection with it. We do, we all put so much time into every part. Whether it's these guys over here putting in the time that they have, and they don't want it. But it's all like there's, like there is no plan in place to keep this together. We can't do this. All of the towns have already backed up, and they're gone. The village is sure, wants to keep this together like it is. With the accountability, turn the paperwork down, we can work it out, we can figure it out. It's already, it's old, like the town money is gone. So we go to the town, that our town here is for town funding. And you also bring that money back. So we're talking about fire services, though, we're talking about this one. You, you, the, the moment you're in a hate of fire service, just in the village, I'm in a town funding. You're in a town funding, we're out. We're not going to cover the hollow of something else, that's already gone. Like, Mark, they're covered by towns that champion the town, we're out. So this is honestly a village affair, village feeling. I'm a clear generation starter, but I do not want to see it happen. I wanted to see it come back, but it's straight back to the community. We're an amazing community of things, just keeping the community together, it's great. We've all volunteered this time, but option A, option B, there's no options. Like, this, there's, the towns out. So unless, we can come up with a hundred thousand dollars and boot drive our summer engine and shit and work, here's nothing that can be done. One of these options has to be done. The, the work in the village is six, this is six, eight months. And this is already over. So don't confuse these two. The business side of this department and the volunteer, rent-saving, fire rescue, that side, there's two separate entities that cannot be put together. Nobody's doubting the time that you put in. You put in 55,000. Nobody is ever going to second guess that. In the time you put in the auxiliary, no one's ever second guessing. No one's second guessing how long my grandfather was in the GED, was in the GED, she's all honest. Nobody's second guessing. They respect it, and everybody in the village respects it. But that you two, that's the business side that we can't get involved.
No, we have to get involved because it isn't working.
Eight months ago, we showed that.
We didn't know about it eight months ago.
It's been in every newspaper for eight months, it's a problem, of course.
It's always been in the newspaper that it's a problem, but did they ever say, open meeting comes with a meeting?
It's come to this.
This time, the last three were in the newspaper, but then a day later, after the meeting.
But don't get mad at the village. This is a fire department, every citizen. Don't get mad at the village. I know that's off, but the town member, come here, come here, and that, it's making wrong. So the village is trying to hold us together. On the business side, nobody's second guessing the reverence I served now, like, no one's.
But where is the town, and Denmark, the town, where are those representatives?
They didn't have to, they're very good at something.
They should have thanked me. But have they been to us?
Honestly, the towns did the village a very big favor by letting us know that they were not going to contract with us. They did not have to do that. They could have simply let their contracts expire. They didn't have to tell us anything.
But the towns and the fire department always worked on their contracts together. What happened to that?
The, the, the towns put out, the towns requested budgets every year. The towns requested information every year, and they weren't giving it. So they just, they put the, put the contract in front of the village board, and they were invited to the meetings.
Which the town, did they talk with the fire department?
They were invited to the table.
The table at the village or at the table at the town?
Both.
What, what this comes down to is the finances. They didn't actually show us anything. I have a report that has something back around.
But they always had a meeting to discuss the budget and what the money was going to be done with.
I haven't, there hasn't been a meeting like that, and I would say eight to ten years.
The lighters don't stop.
Maybe, maybe the fire department needs a little help with managing the financial records. Like, maybe, maybe.
We have offered on multiple occasions to do that.
Maybe let, maybe hire somebody that works with the fire department directly, you know, or you, you know, or somebody that would volunteer to do that. I have a financial, I'm not doing that.
We have an accountant that has volunteered to work for us to go through the books at this time. We're supposed to get an audit, but because of the comptroller thing, and it kept being on the TV, we've gone as far as Albany, as far as Rochester, to get somebody to audit. Well, guess what? You know what they say, you're the one on TV all the time, we don't want nothing to do with you. But yet, the comptroller stated, there is no money missing. It either, all the bills are paid, everything is there. Either it didn't get voted on to pay it, but everything is in place. When a comptroller comes in and checks the fire department, they take your bylaws, they take all your minutes, and they take all your records, and they match them. So they find it in the minutes, oh, this wasn't, you paid something here, but it wasn't in your minutes. So all that stuff gets added up. If you miss some, it all gets added up. It's, it's there, it's accounted for, but it wasn't in your minutes. There is no money missing, and never has been. Other than old shit that Griffey took 10, 15 years ago, which he had to pay back.
Anybody know what the purpose of an audit is? What's the purpose of an audit?
To check the account.
Check the account.
Yes.
When the audit, it's never going to tell you if someone stole money, someone took one. It just shows you, hey, look, this area right here, you might have to pay attention to this because it could, if it's not accounted for, it could be stolen. It just shows, this is going to be a snapshot of how you doing in your accounting. That's all this circular report called a how you doing in your accounting. It won't tell you, oh, so-and-so is stealing, they can't do that.
They come back and tell you. So they don't tell you it's stealing, it's just saying, look. To do this, this, and this, so that you don't get stolen.
So, it said, it said, look, this is what's going on. Go from there. But have anybody looked at the report? Any, any, any of you that, have they looked at the report? Anybody, raise your hand. Has anybody, thank you, sir, has anybody looked at and read the report?
I have.
Thank you. So how are you guys going to get on telling me about option A, option B, and C, and money, when nobody looked at the report? Because that's only, that's the only thing I'm going after, is just, just those two reports. I gotta go and, I gotta look in the past, because I have to find a pattern. Okay, once I see what's going on in the past, then I know if I look forward, so I can move forward, that's why I gotta look in the back, it's a pattern. That's it. Read the report. That's all I ask you guys, is read it.
The past is done and over with because the gentleman went to jail, repaid everything.
Not talking about that.
So you can't go back.
Or to find a pattern, you have to look back in the past to see what's, what's, what's alike. Once I realize what's alike, then boom. Mr. Officer, he had to make a good point about, about the children and, and about how they brainwash them. How they brainwash them. You try to forget the past. If you forget the past, you don't know the mistakes that the past made. That's the purpose of being a parent. Hey, son, I made this mistake, you don't do that. So it's a pattern, look at the patterns. Whatever patterns, whatever patterns they had back in the past, I don't, you want to mention they don't make the same mistake. That's the purpose of the audit. We're not trying to give anybody any trouble. We're just trying to keep accountability and make sure it doesn't happen again. That's it. But I'd encourage you guys, go look at the audit. Look at both of them, read them, put it side by side, and then see, and then see what I see. And then go from there, and then come back and talk to me. And I give you, I got another question for you, but read the report, both of them. Put them side by side, look at it, and then come back and talk to me. Then I got another question, what's your report? And then you see what mine is looking at.
Um, I'd like to see if everybody's whole passion or any business situation. Well, without the past, it's not the past. At this point in time, all you can really think about is, become more of a girl. Without the name of a GP, who would check on a GP?
And, and we don't have a lot of time to make it. Winter's coming, January's coming, fast.
Can we have the vote on this, just you guys up there?
I just have a question, actually. Um, it says that, um, that the, I can't see everyone, but that the, uh, the village should take over control of everything? That means the monies, the building, and the address? Even though the building, the building belongs to the fire department? So that, that's my question. And that might be the issue because, you know, the fire department has had, you know, the control is so long that sometimes the time to get over, you know, control, when you, when you're in, your own relationships are so long. So, I'm just trying to think of that as maybe the function here, with that, with the government, that they can get over everything. All has to be controlled in the village.
Yeah, I mean, that's for, for a building, everything, everything, that's for.
I guess again, you know, we have a 45-year-old building that needs a roof, a $75,000 roof five years ago. They actually have gutters up there diverting water.
What's in the weeds, such form of a burden of a roof problem?
Yes, but they, they, in order to function, they have to take taxpayer money. That's, that's our responsibility, is to provide them with the funding so that they can function and, and, and complete their duties. And that includes providing them with a house to house apparatus. So with that, because they haven't done their budgeting, they haven't done their planning, there is no monies that we know of to fix the building. They want to put us, put a coat of paint on it. What all that does is put lipstick on a pig. You've got a roof that needs to be replaced. You, they, they were forced to redo their bathrooms by, by a PASH audit.
Negative.
Yes, it was black mold. You had to do that because you got viol- there was a violation for black mold in the building.
That wasn't the reason we did the whole thing.
But you were.
We changed it to handicap because we've been planning it for years. That was a water leak behind the wall that nobody knew about.
But you had black mold, and it was in your PASH audit to redo that stuff. So, and it didn't get done till after that?
It was behind a wall. That's why nobody noticed it until they inspected.
Okay, so, so basically, we have a building that's 45 years old, and really, nothing's been done to it. It needs fixing, it needs updating, and it needs a lot of updating. So, you know, and, and again, with the apparatus, the apparatus needs to be on a cycle where that's being replaced in a timely manner. We haven't seen that. We were, we, the village was told at the, at the meeting they had with the towns that the truck monies were no longer there. That the town had Denmark set aside. So I don't know what, what to tell everybody. We need accountability. And the only way to get accountability is to take control. It's our only option at this point. I'm not even sure what else to say.
I don't know what I can say, and this is, it's very good, and you, you just said, there's no money. But you don't want to build another building.
We would have to take out a loan for part of it.
Fire department, you got a loan for that building?
It could, but again, they have to have our support to do that. They have to have contract, that's what we need. We, we don't have monies to support them for the long haul. We have enough monies, we have enough money to support them for about a year at their current funding level. We do not have money beyond that to support them. That's why option A is what it is.
If they go to option A, wouldn't that, that year would give them time?
Yes, correct.
To get the contract.
Yes, correct.
So, let's, um.
It's not up to us.
It's not up to us.
For, for option A to be viable. We can't require that they turn over land in their name. That's something that they would have to say that they're willing to do, so.
So why would they have to do that?
That's what we have been told, where it is going to be required to get people back. We need to have accountability.
We need to put that accountability back in place for the financials. And how the taxpayer money is respected.
But do the finances include your money or how, is this on topic?
It's, it's all taxpayer, we all paid for it anyways. The town is under the village control.
Just so we bring out the PJs and like, some of the fire action. So, so, the fire department has sent this to us over the nation. We refer this upon 10 years ago. We refer this to the county attorney. Okay, two, 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 twenty, twenty, twenty years. So we refer this to the county attorney. And, and if anybody else from the fire department, so you can talk to them, hundred and twenty thousand dollars, you need to talk to them.